Robert, you ready?
I'm ready whenever you want, yes sir. Call to order this special meeting, Navasota City Council, 4:30, City Hall, City Council Chambers. And item two, we don't-
Yes, sir.
Have any... And item three is to conduct a workshop on the proposed budget for fiscal year 25-26. Mr. Hemminger.
Yes, good evening mayor and council. This is a bit of an exciting day for me, as my first budget presentation to you all and the council and to the community, and so I have no doubt that there will be some adjustments, and we will make some adjustments along the way, but as we go through tonight's, you all have the proposed budget book, have had it for about a week. It is available on the city website for any community members that would like to look at it. And I will, just right off the bat, I will, I suppose apologize. I know that you all are accustomed to these slide shows being somewhat over 100 slides and taking multiple hours. Frankly, I just got hired a few months ago and didn't have time to put those together, and so I'll apologize to you, but I'll be up at front and tell you I probably am not going to have time to do it next year either. So hopefully this will-
I think we're willing to let that go.
Hopefully this will meet you all's needs, but if we need to make adjustments, we will along the way. So again, thanks for the opportunity, and I want to thank the staff for the effort that has gone into this. Lupe, what'd you do different, because I'm not working now? All right.
Thank you.
So this is kind of the budget of the agenda, and you all have the slides there, and the audience can see it, and we will incorporate this into the minutes of this meeting, and so it will be available for anyone that wants the slide deck as well. That's the order of the items that we'll go through. The methodology that we use this year, just to kind of hit some of the highlights, there is no change in our proposed tax rate from last year. We are proposing to adopt the same tax rate that you all had last year, which is .5078 per $100 valuation. As we've talked a couple times already, there are no new full-time personnel positions. There is no increase in our city-provided utility rates. We do have a small increase in the garbage collection because of a contractual obligation. We'll get to that, it's on one of the slides later. And just to kind of, as this is my first budget with you all, just to kind of share again a little bit of the conservative approaches that we take, where there is rounding to be done. All revenues are rounded down, all expenses are rounded up. And so that way, we don't get into a bind if there is some adjustments through the way or they're a little bit off, because a budget is always estimates. You're forecasting things sometimes 14, 16 months in advance. We try to give ourselves a little bit more of a conservative approach there to help catch those little things that might adjust throughout the year. We do feel like we have improved transparency with this budget, as opposed to prior years where we have really simplified that approach to looking at our revenue against our expenses and keeping our debt service as a separate fund and tracking those separately, rather than trying to keep up with small portions of the debt throughout and broken up into the various city departments. We also separated out and really tried to emphasize our tracking of capital projects, the new software that we implemented earlier this year. Will allow us to track those with project codes, and will allow tracking and capturing of that data for reports in future or for researching things, it allows us to track that a little better. And we've added some organizational efficiency through our tracking of departmental costs, particularly, we've talked about the maintenance services, which will be a new department that you'll see in this proposed budget, and a new Public Works administration. And just to kind of hit a highlight on that, in prior years, we had some of our Public Works employees that were functioning in the utilities, but maybe they worked part of the time in water, part in sewer, part in gas, but their salary was budgeted all in one of those three. And so it really wasn't an accurate depiction of the costs that any one of the utilities should have been paying. And so what we do with this is we move those personnel to Public Works administration, and then we transfer funds from the utilities that cover a proportionate cost of those salaries. We'll get into that a little bit more in another slide as well. And then again, those transfers come from the utilities into the general fund. That's also kind of a purpose for, or a precursor into why it might look like we have a bigger increase in our general fund than we actually do. But again, to talk about the balanced approach that we've talked about, I wouldn't call this the ideal situation, but I will call it a good situation that we are in. We tried to incorporate as much as we could of capital projects that we felt like hit the priority areas that the council has identified and our strategic plan identifies. And so we took a really close look at this year's budget that will be ending September 30th, and it appears that we will have about $350,000 in surplus at the end of this year, money that was budgeted this fiscal year that we will get in revenue, but we will not expend in expenses. And so we used some of that to help us incorporate more projects into next year without dipping into the fund balance. And so the picture here is, we will use some of that $350,000 to cover the deficit funding in what you see as a proposed budget. We don't have to do that. We could choose that, no, we want that whole $350,000 to go in our fund balance, and we can walk through what you all feel like are the lower of the priorities that you would like to see cut out of the proposed budget in order to get there. But we felt like this really hit as many things as we could without dipping into the fund balance. We're still balanced in that we're not going to dip into the fund balance. We're just going to use what will be left at the end of this year to offset that money. I hope that's an approach that you all appreciate and desire to do, but if not, we can go through the effort of identifying which project should be cut out of this to make sure it is a truly balanced, single-year revenue versus expenses approach. And then as we look at the organizational structure, as we talked about, we're looking for ways to make this a more efficient organization. And on the far-left side there of the departmental line, you see Maintenance Services. That will be a new department that's created. And I, there is another change. You also will see that the city secretary is along that line. I just felt like it really clearly depicts now the organization with the 10 departments that we have and the department directors. All of that leadership team being on a single line there just makes it a really good illustration of how our departments are divided, how their responsibilities are divided, and it really identifies that leadership corps and all the directors on that single line of departments there. And so that's the illustration for that organization as a whole. We did also make some improvements to the public work structure, as you can see. They have had a director and an assistant director for some time, but they kind of had some lopsided responsibilities with a lot of direct reports and really not a good span of control for some of those mid-management supervisors. So now we have in that manager level, the superintendent role. We'll have three different superintendents, one over each of the major functional areas with a little bit better structure or efficiency built into that structure so that each superintendent is over roughly the same level of responsibilities and scope. Maybe not exactly the same number of personnel, but a little bit more balanced as to the approach there. Looking at our tax rate, our proposed tax rate, this is where it fell last year. There will be, undoubtedly, there will be some changes to this chart, because not every city in our area will adopt the exact same tax rate like we are as last year, but this is where we fell, and it will still be close. There's not going to be huge swings, most likely. So our general fund revenue, as I mentioned a minute ago, is approximately 18.5 million. That does appear, at least initially, like a 22% increase, but much of that, I would say about 6 of the 9 million, if I remember correctly. It's not 9 million total, that's not an accurate statement. Don't let me try to speculate on the numbers. Of that 22%, the vast majority of it is the change of accounting methodology, of moving those personnel from the utility funds over to the general fund and then transferring that money in from the utility funds so that we're tracking their costs a little bit more accurately. The property tax revenue is total about 3.9 million, and that is up a little under 8% from last year. And so again, revenue is rounded down. Utility rates, which are proposed, are to remain the same without the previously authorized increase. You all had an action item several years ago that illustrated you would have increases in your utility rates for five years in a row. Our proposal is, let's keep them, let's hold them steady for now. Let's get the budget underway. Let's continue the audit of our utility billing system. Let's proceed forward with our utility rate study, and let's see where that all comes out, and then let's set the rates later, next calendar year, that we feel like are appropriate for the systems that we have, once we get the issues worked out. We just didn't feel it was appropriate to compound a problem where we know there are some issues, and if we try to raise them, then we're just going to potentially make it worse. And we just would rather have the opportunity to go in, review everything, fix it, and then come in with whatever the appropriate rates need to be. And like we mentioned earlier, garbage collection does have a CPI-based increase. This is the rate structure from your previous action, and again, we're going to propose to hold it at that FY 2025, so it's kind of highlighted in yellow there. We're just going to hold it. That's the current rates, and we're going to propose that we hold those. And then on the next slide, this is from Republic Services, the proposed garbage collection rates, which do reflect a 4.3% CPI-based increase that would be effective as of February 1st. It won't be for a few more months, but they are obligated to give us by July 31st. They're required to give us notice, and they have done so. So we wanted to go ahead and incorporate that in for everyone's awareness. Yes, sir.
For the contract that we have with them, is it one more year or two more years?
It goes until, if I remember correctly, January 31st of '27. So one more full year, plus a few months. Right?
I think that's right.
Yeah.
I can verify that.
Is there any way that we can get out of that contract with them?
Generally speaking, no. Those are usually, and the city attorney would have to speak more to the legal side of that, but my experience is those really, unless they default by some egregious action, there's not usually an opportunity, because the way it's perceived is they've counted on that. They've bought trucks, they've accounted on those rates, I mean, on that revenue for their business, and they've bid on it for the locked-in period. And so unless they default by doing something really off-the-wall, inappropriate, or just not collecting at all, there's really not a whole lot of, usually, opportunity to get out of them early. We don't have to go through any extensions. If it ends January 31st of 2027, we can be ready that winter, that third quarter, fourth quarter of that 2026. We can do the whole process, we can bid it out, and we can be prepared with a new contract at the end of it, without any extensions. And then when we look at the actual base budget numbers of our city budget, it's really no different than what we have in our home budgets. We have certain things that we have to pay. They have to come right off the top, our mortgage or our rent, our utilities, our basic food and clothing. The city has the same kind of things. We have personnel costs, personnel salaries that are built into that. We have equipment that has to be purchased or maintained. We have supplies for providing the services that we provide, and those costs kind of have to come right off the top. And then what's left becomes somewhat discretionary, and we have options of how we prioritize that, what we would in our home budget call our discretionary funding. And so we, as a portion of that, use our strategic plan to help guide those decisions. And you all have offered some thoughts on the strategic plan and where those priorities are and what those goals are. And our current adopted strategic plan has seven different goals that we've gone through. We've talked about some specific tasks, and we've gone back with the staff, and we've worked on correlating those items into their departmental requests and making sure that they align with the priorities that the council has provided or has acknowledged and affirmed. And so we've really tried to focus on, in this budget particularly, some quality-of-life initiatives and some infrastructure initiatives to make sure that we are really focused in on those things that are of high value and high importance to our community. And so as we move forward, I think that's what we're going to see in this proposed budget. And two of the things that we did want to kind of highlight were, we still had funding from previous debt issuances that you all have authorized. Your 2022 certificates of obligation had not been fully utilized, and obviously, the 2025 were just issued a few months ago, right before I was hired, and there's some funding there. And so we tried to capture that and maximize our use of those funds in order to, again, get as many projects as we could funded in here, but still presenting a balanced approach of not dipping into our fund balance. And so as you can see here, your 2022 certificates of obligation, they were already funding the elevated storage tank. There's a little under 1.4 million in remaining obligation there to finish that project out. It's looking great, it's already up over the trees. I can't wait to see that up and in the air with the logos on it and really in use and available to our community. And then there are a few other projects that, really a lot of utility fund-type stuff. There is a need for another gas regulator station on the east side of Highway 6 if we are going to provide additional services and additional developments out there. And so as we've had some conversations, as we start preparing for that, that opportunity presents itself. And while gas, natural gas, is not available to do an impact fee on, this is one of those things that we would look for if we embark on this, if we do this. As we have developers come and approach us, and they ask for development agreements with concessions for a special district, concessions for use of TERS funds, if they're in the TERS area that you all have already created, if they ask for variances to your subdivision ordinances, anything that they come and ask for that you all feel like you might be willing to say yes to, that allows us to say, okay, we're willing to give you these concessions, but we've also invested, as you can see here, on the natural gas system. We've invested 3/4 of a million dollars. We would like your development to pay a prorata portion of that in order to serve the development that you intend to bring to our community. Again, we want to welcome the developers here, but we don't necessarily want the creation of all of the infrastructure to serve their development to be borne by our current residents. So we go into those things, and even if we can't obligate it through a designated impact fee, there are ways for us to negotiate that contractually with developers. And then there are a couple items there for a water loop and a gas loop to finish out the east, I'm sorry, the west side over near Pecan Lakes. There is some needed repairs at the wastewater treatment plant discharge site, and there is a need for a portable water pump, an upgrade to a portable water pump to help clean out areas when there's a water lake, to help pump out areas and allow the crews to get down into service the lines in a more efficient manner. And again, all of those things, we intend to fund with 2022 certificates of obligation that you all have already issued. The money is already sitting there in the bank, and these are eligible projects for that. So really, and you have, based on the offering statement that you gave, or whoever the council was at that time gave, when that debt was issued, there is limits to what we can use those funds for. So we looked for opportunities to maximize and use those funds for eligible projects that would serve the community as a whole. And then on the right side, your 2025 certificates of obligation. There are a number of projects there. Again, these were things that got requested in this, or some of them were identified when you issued the debt, but some maybe weren't. But they are eligible based on the offering statement, and we feel like they would be the best use of those funds rather than them, again, just sitting and us dipping into fund balance to do these kinds of projects. It just maximizes that use. And so you've already done your pool repairs. The roof repairs and recoating at the library are already well underway. It's looking great, I went by there today. We do have some interior repairs at the library. I'll quickly touch on the two that are highlighted in yellow, just because that's a, as we were putting the final touches on the budget, we made some adjustments along the way. And initially, these two numbers were a little bit different. If you look at the cover memo, the city manager's cover memo that is in the very beginning of the budget book, these are the numbers that you'll see, but if you look later in the detail pages, there's a different number. So before you adopt the actual budget, we will make these changes, and we will reflect that in a, and we'll make sure that we capture those. But these are the actual, what we would like to see in the proposed budget for you all to adopt. And then the basketball court at Miller Park, that's an estimated number, that's underway. Got some pictures today. Half of the concrete is already poured, it's looking great. Special thanks to the Public Works team for getting out there and making that. I'm really looking forward to seeing the neighboring residents getting to use that basketball court and have some fun at that park, so great job there. And then again, we do have some roof repairs needed at the pool house, some interior repairs at the fire station. We've talked about, you know, if we're going to delay the actual construction of a new station while we figure out what's the best use of those funds? What is it, should it be a public safety combined building? Or what is the best option, and what can we afford to do? If we're going to wait a little while, we felt like we probably ought to get in there and fix some of the issues that are in the existing station. And even if we do end up building another station and they move out, that would still put that building in the ability to be used, whether it be by the fire department or by another city department. So certainly, I think, a good investment there. We have some painting for the Navasota Center, repaving of the remainder of the walking trails at August Horse Park. That'll be a continuation of, there's some effort going on in this year's budget. This will continue that effort, and then also a barrier fence to protect, not only from vehicles going out there and damaging the fields, but heaven forbid, someone tried to go out there to hurt someone that was out on the fields. Protective fence to help give a barrier there.
Robert, I did look it up, and Republic Services contract does in January 31st of 2027.
Yeah, okay, perfect. And we will make sure that we are prepared well in events for an RFP.
On the pool house, do you think it's a good idea to spend, or proposed to spend $55,000 on it when they have a overhaul on the new Parkmaster plan on it?
Well, I don't know that that building would go away, even if we were to move forward or find some funding to do a larger-scale project. I don't think that even in the proposal that was done on Brewley, that there was a, that building would still be there, right? It would still be used. So that, I think the investing in the roof to stop any further damage from going on, and I did notice that there was a, there's actually some interior repairs for the pool house as well that are in the proposed budget that I didn't apparently get on the spreadsheet, I mean, on my PowerPoint. So that's a, again, I think that fixing the roof stops additional damage from happening and minimizes what we will have to do on the inside. But right now, the building is really not usable, and we would like to get it back to a position where it could be rented out and be used. And even if we did decide to do something at that park on a bigger scale because we get a windfall of some grant funds, I think we would still use that building. I don't think anyone envisions us discarding that building and starting over. All right, and then as we get into CIP projects that are actually funded in the general fund, all the ones before that we were talking about on the previous slides are from, are coming from other funding sources, so they're not really hitting our general fund. These are ones that we did incorporate into this year's general fund and are all part of what you saw as a proposed total. And so you have your continuation of your annual street maintenance. We have the mobile data computers for the police vehicles, which are in need of replacement. We have animal shelter renovations, which I believe everyone is in agreement is desperately needed. We have a vehicle lift for Maintenance Services to really start getting some more of our vehicle maintenance done in-house, but we don't have a lift that we can currently lift up the vehicles and work on underneath. We have several vehicles that are being replaced in public safety, and the premise here is, there's really no advantage to the community or to the city's budget by continuing the enterprise lease for public safety vehicles. So for these three that are getting replaced this year, our proposal is to replace them, cash fund them, outfit them, and then maintain them here and not put them in the lease program. We're continuing the lease and continuing to evaluate its effectiveness for Public Works. And we do have multiple that are going to propose, maybe on the next agenda. I'll have to look, one of the next couple agendas to get proposed for the next year. And that dollar amount is already built into the budget as well, the continuation of the lease that you've had. And then we plan on this year really evaluating that and taking a close look at, for the long term, do we want to continue the enterprise lease? Or do we want to start going with like what we're going to do for public safety? And the idea there is, it's almost like we leased the vehicles from ourselves. So we would cash fund the vehicles, and then in the department's budget, instead of that $500,000 lease payment to Enterprise for the year, we would fund that into a vehicle replacement fund for ourselves. And every four, five, six years, whatever a vehicle lasts, then we have the cash. In transfers, we have the money sitting there to fund the replacement vehicles.
Does that give us more flexibility?
It, well, it does, because we're in complete control. The one negative that people could bring up immediately is, well, then it's on us to try to trade the vehicles in or to try to sell the vehicles at auction. Enterprise has a pretty robust system, and they get us, they get us a premium on selling them, and that's why we're really going to look closely at, what do we realistically think? We would sell them for an auction, and what is Enterprise getting us? And is that delta worth continuing the program with them and the administrative costs that we pay them versus doing it ourselves? And so we want to really get into that level of detail to decide, is it, which way makes more sense economically for us? We do have some City Hall and Council chambers technology upgrades. We have the employee compensation plan and the strategic plan and CIP plans at $25,000 each. So those are the CIP things that are incorporated into the proposed budget as we get into employee benefits. The salary survey, as mentioned, is in there. That allows us to really take a close look at, in these new pay grades, are the positions in the right grade? Are we competitive in the market with the other hiring jurisdictions around us that are, that we're competing with for the talent acquisition? that are uh that we're competing with for the talent acquisition? Um and making sure that that we're staying in that competitive market. We do have a proposed pay plan that uses standardized job titles. We've we've sent changed a few job titles in the organization to give us a standardization there to make sure that we've got parity so that positions that are working um in like responsibilities are on a on a parity level, s- uh similar pay scale. Um and we have predetermined performance-based increases so that we don't have allegations of favoritism or i- it really makes it easier to budget for those kind of things. If I an employee is meeting our performance matrix and they're performing satisfactorily at their annual review, they move up to the next step and we have a picture of that in a minute. Um we also have in this proposed budget, a 2.5% cost of living increase across the board. Um that roughly matches the CPI uh for the Houston area. The the idea here is that we would do uh the COLA would be at the first pay period, starting after the budget goes after October 1st. So everyone would get a 2.5% pay increase. Then we would get the salary survey going. We get the results in. We might make a couple of adjustments of that pay plan. And then we would implement the pay plan after the salary survey results are in. You all have adopted that, have blessed the the final pay plan and we would likely implement that early in next calendar year. So it would kind of be a two-phased approach, but rather than implementing everything right off the bat on October 1st and then finding that there were some things in the salary survey that told us we should make some adjustments, we'd rather just hold off on implementation until we have the salary survey results and then implement the pay plan. But go ahead and give the employees a COLA at the beginning of the fiscal year was the the premise there. Uh and as we've been discussing, the the retirement system increased benefits. This uh proposed budget does include include a portion of what our goal was and that it does get us to 20-year retirement eligibility and it does get us to a 6% contribution rate. I did put a little note there at the bottom. Today, TMRS offers 5%, 6% and 7% as the contribution rate options. We are at 5%, but effective next week on uh are effective on in just a few weeks. On September 1st, uh they will offer 8% as an option. And so it became a little bit more of a priority for us to at least take that first step this year because if we stay at 5 and other cities start offering 8% contribution rates, that would really start being obvious in our recruiting efforts, I think. And so uh this will keep us from falling any further behind uh with other jurisdictions.
Do they offer a six and a half?
They do not. It's 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 straight percent. Yeah, it's straight percentage points. Five, six, seven and eight will be the fourth option. And they don't offer anything between 20 and 25 years as the eligibility. It's 20 or 25. Um so the the proposed pay plan is a defined step pay plan is what it would be called. Each job title is placed in its specific pay grade and there are job family titles that have progressive pay grades to give employees uh a career ladder uh to promote into. So in an example of someone comes in as an operator one, they get certain licenses, certifications or proficiency. They move to an operator two. After that, they could move to an operator three. Each one of those is a promotion up the up the career ladder. It moves them to a higher pay grade. And then as they move across that pay grade uh each year with their performance, uh they get those built-in increases. Um and jobs with similar similar levels of knowledge, skill and ability generally paced up placed in the same pay grade. And so this will be very difficult for people in the audience to see, but it is in the in the budget. If you go online and download the proposed budget, um this just kind of shows this is the actual general pay scale. So for all positions listed there on the left and how it starts at the probationary step all the way through, uh there are defined increases uh each step along the career path. And then there is a separate pay scale for the executive leadership team. So all directors and above are are in that pay scale. And then the final page there is the public safety pay scale uh that has all of the uh positions within the police and fire departments um illustrated there. So with that, I do want to just talk about because, you know, we talked about a lot about what's included in the budget. There are some questions about well, what's not in there? What did we have to cut? Uh obviously, we can't do everything we want to do in one year. Um we did fund through a lot of different creativity. We we funded over a million dollars in general fund uh CIP projects, uh but we had almost three million dollars requested by the by the departments. And so as you can see, uh we we obviously can't do it all. Uh they did help us to prioritize those and there's a partial list of some of the things that on the right there that that we just weren't able to uh to get into into this year's. But the departments have all looked at that. They've all um none of them quit because this stuff wasn't included. So I assume it they can live with it for for another year. Um no one laughed. Doesn't have to be that serious. Um but anyway, yeah, we 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 want to do a lot of good things for the community, but obviously we understand there is a limitation to the resources that we have. And and so we we make the best of what we have. There is a calendar here, but I did um we were having a conversation earlier and I think there's gonna be a couple of adjustments here to the action dates in September. Uh so um while while this was good until just a couple of hours ago, um I'm I'm afraid we might make just because we want to make sure that we meet all the statutory timelines for posting of notices for the public hearing and adoption and all of that. So there might be some slight tweaks to uh the action items and we may have one special call council meeting just to make sure we get everything done in the in the prescribed timelines. So with that, that 35 minutes, that was pretty close. Um what questions do you all have? What items do you have? Obviously, I didn't go page by page through the book. I felt like that's just not really the best use of our time. I kind of wanted to hit the highlights and hit the big topics. And if you all have specific questions, um the staff is here to ask if there are any at their level. If there's anything that I need to answer, uh we are available, whether it be tonight or in the days and weeks ahead. Um so if you have any prepared in the time that you've had to review the budget, I we do have the book budget and Lupe does have the PDF that he could if we needed to put it up on the screen. Uh if there was a specific page that you wanted to call attention to for those in the audience uh from the actual budget book, we can do that as well.
You had you had talked briefly about contingency. And I think that's something that we may want to kind of delve into just a little bit more just as far as what what kind of numbers are, I guess, industry standard, you know, how many months?
Yep.
Uh you know, should we should we have, you know, available and what have we had in the past?
Yeah, so.
Kind of what is your idea for this budget?
Yeah, so so I'll I'll say that um we won't know the exact, you know, we we're waiting on um, you know, with the closeout of the fiscal year, what we will update. I anticipate that we are somewhere between, heaven, correct me or throw something if I'm way off. We're somewhere between seven and eight million dollars in fund balance, unassigned fund balance uh reserves, which if you look at this year, we're proposing an eighteen and a half million dollar um budget. So that's 40%, you know, give or give or take. So maybe that's um somewhere between four and five months of operating capital. Um the auditors will almost all tell you that uh 25% is the bare minimum to to maintain your bond ratings. They they think if you get below 25% or three months of operating capital, you start looking to bondholders as, you know, a a negative turn in the economy could put you at risk for defaulting on obligate debt obligations. Um so obviously, we want to stay clear of getting too close to that number. Um I think for this community with the relative risk that we have for large-scale events, you know, six months is certainly um aspirable and and we will get there. I think over the course of the next few years, we will see budgets that involve depositing money into that to get us up to, you know, nine and a quarter on the eighteen and a half. Nine and a quarter would be exactly six months of operating capital. I think we will get to that. My personal budget philosophy is I would like us to even be farther than that. I would like us to get to closer to nine months or even 10 months so that we can cash fund some of our CIP projects and then pay ourselves back. Instead of paying bondholders' interest out the door, I would rather borrow that money from the fund balance when we do a project and pay ourselves back, kind of like we're talking about doing with vehicles. If we can, I mean, obviously, when we build a large 15 or 20 million dollar building or some huge investment in the wastewater treatment plant, we can't just cash fund those. We're though there are times when cities reasonably issue debt. But I think where there are items, uh even big-ticket things um that we need to do, like I would have liked to have been in a position where we could have cash funded the repairs to the pool. We weren't there, so we issued some debt. We did it and that's okay. But my philosophy will be I would like us to get to a a a position where we've got nine or 10 months of operating capital in the bank as a fund balance. We know that we're comfortable because of our if we have a disaster or something, we know that six or seven of those months, we we're comfortable that that'll get us through uh those obligations and then have, you know, a couple of million dollars there that we can borrow from ourselves and pay ourselves back over time and and cash fund some of our CIP needs. Uh I think that puts us in a much better uh position and it will ultimately it will lead to an improved bond rating so that when we do issue debt, we get a a better interest rate.
You know, that wouldn't be something new because in years past, we were able to pay like pay cash for our a a fire truck and, you know, there were other things that we we were able to do that. So that's something definitely to aspire to.
Yes, sir.
And also, um our policy, our financial policy is about 90 days of reserve. And if you take a look at our general fund fund summary, I included a snippet on the bottom. Um our targeted reserve is 119 days, which is just a day shy of 120 days, which is the norm that you typically see for other municipalities. So I think we're doing very well and that can be found on page 11.
I just wanted that kind of out there so everybody kind of could understand why we do that.
On a page 12 of the proposed budget book under utilities uh utilities reimbursement and utility payment in lieu of down at the bottom.
Yes, sir.
Pretty large increase for this proposed year.
Yes, sir. That's so that's the the product of moving all of the personnel costs which used to be in these budgets. We moved them completely out of those budgets into the general fund and now they are they are funding their proportionate cost of of that into the general fund. And so the salaries will be paid out of the general fund instead of out of the utilities themselves. It really it the bottom line didn't change much. It's really a an accounting philosophy change where we move the personnel over to the general fund so that each of these utilities, water, sewer and gas, are only paying their proportionate um portion of the employee's salary. So as one example, the director of Public Works was last year funded 100% in the water fund. But she doesn't work 100% of her time in the water fund, so it made more sense for us to move that position to the general fund and take, I don't remember the percentage of let's just say 25% of her salary out of water, 25% out of sewer, 25% out of gas and 25% out of the general fund. It's probably not 25% each, but that was just well, I could do it in my head quickly that way um as an example. And so so really moving all of those positions and only making the utilities pay their part that they should be responsible for, that approximately reflects the percentage of time that that employee works in that utility, gives us a better accounting, better tracking of the of the costs.
Would that be just about the same thing on the the next page, on page 13, upon the development service uh on the follow fees, on the flat fee and the preliminary flat following fee?
Uh on page 13?
Yes.
What lot where where are we at?
Uh upon the development services.
Uh huh.
Forty, forty-five, Robert.
Yeah, forty, forty-five.
Okay, so yeah, so what we one of the things that we are looking at and and we intend to to be coming to you all with is as we prepare for these developments. Right now, uh the system that we have in place results, we don't have an engineer in-house. So when we get a development application or a permit application, we outsource the review of those plans to an engineering firm. And from day one, as soon as we send it to them, we have lost money on that. So we are looking at what should we be collecting as permit fees for these developers so that they are so that we're not losing money. And so this reflects that trying to at least break even on issuing permits and getting at least one round of engineering review done. There may be it may change even more as we get into, you know, two and three rounds of reviews. We may develop some other options, but we do intend to come to you all in the next few months with uh a schedule of fees uh amendment change to our development fees uh so that we make sure that we're at least breaking even and we're and we're really establishing those permit fees on what it costs us to issue the permit.
Okay, I've just seen quite a bit increase. Uh on the next page, on page 14, uh and I know that here a couple of months ago, we changed the fees of the softball, baseball team, football team, soccer teams on the uh y- use of the fields. On a 6150, 6155, 6160. Did all those youth teams pay the fee?
Yes.
And so uh at the uh uh on the same page of Parks and Recreation, 6105, we're projecting to bring in $25,000 for the rental of the Navasota Center from 7,000. That's a pretty large jump, isn't it?
Well, so I think what what you're seeing there is the budget for this year was 28,000.
Right.
But we have not seen that much rental income this year. I don't know if there were some delays or some uh time that that facility was not available uh for rental. But the last two years, if you look at actual 23, 24, we brought in 37,000 and then 28,000 was budgeted this year, but it looks like we're down. Our that's in the estimate column, so we lowered what we expect for next year down to 25. Um I I don't know, Tiffany or Kristen, do y'all know offhand why the mi- the revenue might be down or I?
I'm gonna guess a result in the the pricing change and the all the talks that we had in 2023. It affected 2024. There was a period of time, though, when you had lots of groups that were having to find alternate locations. I just know if that was.
Heaven, heaven, can you look at that? Can you look at what our year-to-date is?
I want to make sure that 7,000.
I was gonna say that may that may be a typo. That may be 27.
Because I've definitely noticed we we get those regular reports.
Yeah, we're gonna.
It has been booked.
We're gonna look into that. We'll get back with you. Well, that may that very well may be a that 7,000 may be a 17 or 27.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, yeah, I hope so.
Yeah, there could be a delay in the journal entry. And also, um this year, we are trying to like put everything in the correct accounts. So like if you look, you'll see that we have received revenue for some accounts, but there's no budget. So I'm thinking previously that they just lumped it all within that 6105 in prior years. Um and this year, we're kind of just trying to break it out more with within each account. That one, that one.
If if we could stay on that page, the um just had a question about the library, library donations. Um that would be anytime that any organization gives the library money to do something.
For five dollars, okay. You know, put the extra five towards donation.
But you now we now have a nonprofit that's helping to fund something, I think. And so that's I was just curious if that if that nonprofit, if their money is going into another account.
They have their own separate.
They're just, okay, so. They're just, okay, so, but they're collecting the money, but they're not saying here, take the money. They're just doing it on their own. I'll buy twenty-seven books and donate the twenty-seven books.
Correct, or also do a deal.
Feels like we should have the Jeopardy music going.
Yeah.
On page twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Human resources.
Yes, sir.
Two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars from one oh nine last year.
Yes, sir, so the, the one oh nine is that they have a, they had a separate, a second position that was funded, or that was approved in last year's budget, but it was never, it was never hired. Um, and so we have added funding in for that position. We will only, the, the one oh nine shows it to be vacant through the rest of this fiscal year. That would, that includes salary and benefits for that HR generalist position. If you look there at the bottom of that same page, it shows that in the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five budgets, there was an HR generalist position, but apparently it's not been filled. Or they had one part of the time in twenty-three, they left, and it never got refilled. And so, um, right now Peggy is trying to do everything on her own. And I feel like that's one that we need to, we need to really make sure that we get filled for this year so that, so that that, that department gets some assistance.
I thought they moved that position to utility billing, like it was just, it just moved over.
My understanding is that it was funded last year, Robert, but then that, those funds were redirected to another position.
Okay, redirected by the council or by the city manager?
By the city manager.
Wasn't me. We remember.
So Peggy will be getting help?
Yes, sir, we hope so. That's the proposal.
Okay, if we can back up to page, page twenty-two.
Yes, sir.
Administration.
Yes, sir.
Personnel service.
Yes, sir.
Big, big jump.
I don't want to point out that you hired me.
Uh, that's a little bit to do with it. The big pay raise there, huh?
It also includes the pay raise that we had for the city secretary this year.
It was what?
We did pass a pay raise for the city secretary this year that had not been previously budgeted from last year. So it includes that as well. So it includes the pay increase for the city manager, the pay increase for the city secretary, and. It also includes, um.
I was gonna say, it does also include internship and part-time. Yeah, we had some funding in there, we had some funding in there also for internships that we're hoping to partner with A and M to expand our use of, of internships from, from there. And, um, so yes, there are, there are, it is slightly more than that. It also does incorporate all of the, the changes that we've talked about with the, with the pay plan, with the COLA, with the TMRS. All of that is, is already incorporated into there.
Okay, well, that makes sense, because I know you and Susan both didn't get that big raise.
No, no, yes, sir. There, there are a few other things in there. It's just hard to illustrate internships that we don't know if we'll get down in that bottom or the personnel roster. Those are the full-time positions, and we very well may have some interns that come in and use some of those.
I know that you probably got it in here somewhere, and I just hadn't found it yet. Uh, had asked, uh, after one of the sounds of summers of by the drone for the police department.
Yes, sir. So what we discovered in our, in our discussions with the leadership team is the city already owned a drone. So we are reassigning that from.
Oh, we did?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna make sure that the police department has access to that, uh, to use in addition to. It's, it's kind of shared between development services, economic development, and, and the police department. And, and so we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that everyone, marketing can all have access to it and make sure that it's available. But yes, the city does, did have one, I didn't know that when you asked me, but the city does have one.
Under supplies, just in general, does supplies include computers that would also be in IT's budget? Or does IT take on the assumption of every expense for cost of software, cost of upgrades, cost of new equipment? Is that broken down in each department? Or is that solely just looking at his supplies at forty-three thousand? Uh, and everybody else's supplies, I'm wondering, I don't know if that's enough money to cover the whole city under his department, or does each department have their own?
Yeah, I think, I, I think it's kind of a combined approach right now, but we did, we just didn't have time this year. What we would like to do is divide those out. In, in the IT budget currently, there are a lot of costs that we feel like would be more accurately tracked at the department level, like for specific software, for, you know, production of, you know, again, th- those kind of things, those, those hardware elements. Even our, all city cell phones, regardless of what department they're in, they all fall in IT. Uh, and so we're going to try to break those out next year uh, so that we get better tracking and we have an accountability for each department that's using cell phones or desk phones or computers. And so today, it's kind of a hodgepodge, and there's just some departments have, have budgeted for things and, and IT budgets for the big things, like servers and those kind of things. But if it's a desktop replacement, that's probably in the department's budget.
On page twenty-seven. On the personnel position roster.
Yes, sir.
Building official, plan examiner. Is that a dual position or?
That's our current building official, right?
I've got another question here, financial services, page thirty-one. At the very top, non-departmental. That seven oh seven number?
Yes, sir. So the, so the non-departmental expenses, heaven, I'll, I'll take a stab at it, and then you can kind of correct. So non-departmental are those citywide expenses that, that aren't really borne by one department. That might be our insurance, our property and casualty insurance. It might be a part of our debt service that's being paid by the sales tax because our sales, a portion of our sales tax buys down our property tax. And so it goes towards the debt service side of our tax rate. And so you see some of those kind of expenses in there, and I know I've left some out. Heaven, help me.
They haven't helped me.
I did.
He's, he's correct.
So you may recall, council, that, that last year, you had a city hall budget. And there was a department for city hall, and a lot of those were lumped in there. But it became to be like, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, but that seemed like if departments didn't have extra money for their supplies, well, we'll just buy it out of the city hall budget. And, you know, and kind of became a little place, and we just felt like it was better accounting for us to just do away with that and track those expenses more accurately uh, in a non-departmental, those, those expenses that are truly, and not have an extra bucket of supplies and those kind of dollars just sitting there for whoever wants to dip their hand in the cookie jar.
On the next page, page thirty-two. Can you just identify the, both of these positions here, the senior financial analyst and the financial analyst?
Yes, sir. So I'll let, go ahead.
So are senior financial analysts handles procurement, accounts payable, anything in that, anything going out? And then our financial analyst handles payroll, accounts receivable, anything coming in?
So it would not be uncommon, I, I will just offer, from my experience, it wouldn't be uncommon, particularly in an organization this size, this is very reasonable. I think in positions in finance, you might sometimes see different titles. You might see an, an accounts payable manager, a payroll manager. We're just using different titles so that we can better optimize their, their use and, and use them for multiple things rather than specialties. But it, it wouldn't be uncommon to see someone in purchasing, a buyer, a purchasing manager, an AP, accounts payable, accounts receivable, different functions. And so they're just kind of using the financial analyst, analyst positions to, to group a few of those responsibilities together under one person and, and divvying up the tasks.
And down at the bottom, we're, let's see, receptionist, is that for the whole city at all, right?
The receptionist is the downtown, the, the city hall receptionist. And there is, you, you'll see there, there is a part-time position there that's not filled currently that we will be trying to fill, so that when the receptionist is out, we don't have to take one of the utility billing clerks or someone from another department, put them up there. We could, we could call in the part-time employee and, and let them fill that, that gap.
So would it be? Wise to say that we had some positions that was budgeted last year that was not filled last year?
There are a few, yeah, there, there's, there's a few even when we were going through the budget this year. There are six or eight, I would, I would say, of current positions that are, that are funded in this year's budget that are currently vacant. And, and some of those have been, you know, getting filled, or some of them are currently being advertised, and some, we really decided, well, we might as well just wait until we get a good handle on the, on the budget. And so, you know, but.
Are they needed or?
I, I think so. I, I think the, the staff positions that we have are a good, a good spot for where we are right now. We didn't add any, obviously, we, we had that conversation prior. But before we start cutting, I'd like to, to, to really get that opportunity to take a good evaluation of where are we, and if we need to make reassignments or shift things around, kind of like we've done in, in public works. They did a great job of coming in, sitting down, going through the positions they had, kind of organizing them under those superintendents that we saw on the charter a few minutes ago, um, and, and really kind of optimizing their, their organizational structure with the positions that they have. Uh, and then we can evaluate, okay, do we need more positions, or are we heavy in a certain area? Um, I, I think that's a good exercise, and, and I think the departments are ready to, to embark on that.
The reason I ask the question is, you know, we, we're saying that we're, we're not gonna hire any new employees. And I just want to make sure that the general public knows that, okay, uh, it was budgeted last year, but we didn't really hire, we may be hiring this year or something.
So I, I think the only position that I'm aware of that was budgeted last year from the get-go and was never filled was the HR generalist. I think all of the other ones have at least been filled for part of the year, but maybe they've, they're vacant now, or maybe they were filled when the year started, but that someone left, or there's been some turnover. I think we have had some positions like that, but I don't know of any, at least not that's been brought to my attention other than that HR generalist that was clearly included in last year's budget um, and has never been filled in the current fiscal year. That's the only one that I'm aware of. And I, from just the little time that I've been here, I would suggest that position is needed. I, I think HR does need another, another person.
But as you get more and more settled in, you may determine that, you know, other things.
Absolutely.
May or may not be.
That's correct.
You know. From seeing the workflow and the way the departments are working together and working.
Yes, sir, correct.
So out of the, I think we, we have one hundred and thirty-nine employees?
Hundred and thirty-two rings a bell. I'm not looking at that.
The public work and then the police department would be the two biggest departments.
Uh, yes, sir, I would think, um, yeah, they're, for sure, those two are the two largest.
Do you want combined part-time and full-time, or just full-time?
Uh, part-time and full-time, is it one thirty-nine?
I have one thirty-six on the spreadsheet here, but that may not. I think that's full and part, that's full and part-time.
Friday's financial report on the, on your message.
Showed one thirty-two, okay.
I think there was a number of paychecks.
And we, well, we may have some seasonal workers on there for now, because the pool was, would have still been. I can get you a, a better answer, but it looks like, just a quick glance, it looks like one hundred and twenty-five full-time and nine part-time on my spreadsheet that I'm looking at here.
I would think there's more part-time, because how many part-time firefighters do we have?
That's why I'm counting them, there's eight part-time firefighter positions.
And we have three part-time Navasota Center.
I probably skipped over them. I was going, I was trying to run through one hundred and thirty lines real quick. Yes, I see them, there are, yes, three part-time, so that would be eleven part-time. So from one hundred and thirty-six total minus eleven part-time would be one twenty-five full-time.
Is, is that kind of average for a town I was asked?
Yes, sir, I would say that, um, I don't have the, the survey, but HGAC does a, an annual, Houston-Gowishton area council, that we're in a different cog up here, I understand. But they do a big regional salary survey each year, and I've been tracking the last several years of the average, you, you can go in, they show the population for the cities, and then the number of full-time employees that they have. And so I just kind of came up with my own little matrix of tracking number of employees per thousand residents. Um, and so the average is usually somewhere between, um, it, it's, it's gonna be a wide range, but you'll see somewhere between twelve and twenty people per thousand residents. If we have, let's just say, ten thousand residents, and we have a hundred and twenty thousand employees, that would be twelve employees per thousand residents. I know we don't have exactly ten thousand, but we don't have exactly a hundred and twenty. So I'm just trying to do something, I can do the math in my head. So I, I think we're within the average of what I've seen on surveys, particularly because we also offer gas that not a lot of cities offer, and we have employees that work on the gas side. So I think a twelve to fifteen employees per thousand residents is a reasonable number. Doesn't mean we can't make ourselves more efficient and can't get towards the lower end of that range, but I think that's kind of where we are today, and, and we'll continue to look at that and see if we can find even more efficiencies and get lower. Or do we need to add some positions, because there's, there's gaps that we're not able to fill with what we have?
Some of the, some of the towns have volunteer fire departments.
That's true, yeah. Some, some cities might be volunteer fire, you know, it's just different things. Some, we have most of our garbage collection as contracted, where some cities would have that as in-house employees. So there, there's always, that's why the range is so wide, because cities offer different services under, you know, as city employees as opposed to contract labor. you know, as city employees as opposed to contract labor.
What about city engineer? I know that, that that's been done different ways with us over the years, mainly because of just availability of.
Yeah, I think.
Someone able to do it, but.
I, I think if you're happy with the way it is and, and getting good service out of contractors, um, there's nothing wrong with keeping it that way. And if you at some point decide you wanna hire this. Certainly a city this size could certainly hire an engineer and it, it wouldn't be, no one would say, why do they have, they're too small for a city engineer. It's just, but, you know, that, that's really just a matter of preference of, are you getting good service from the, from the engineers that are, that are working for you right now or do you, do you want it in-house?
I would just ask Lupe, I mean, is it just, for our knowledge, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, the.
Are going pretty smoothly.
Yeah, the various companies we use, they provide good service.
Is it turning around pretty good?
Yes, sir.
No, no, it's definitely gotten better now that the, our, uh, building official and we've got those positions filled. And, you know, that's helped a lot, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. Yeah, having the in-house building official has helped on the commercial and residential, uh, construction plan reviews. That, that has, turnaround is really quick and obviously you get more customer service having that in-house.
My last question.
Yes, sir.
Page forty-three. Uh, on the, uh, library. The, uh, requested twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, fifteen dropped pretty, pretty low, didn't it? From the last two previous years. Under the servicing charges.
Yes, so I, I believe what that is, is that's, um, in services is where you would find the maintenance obligations and most of the maintenance for most departments was moved, God bless you, to the new maintenance services department. So that funding just moved out of the department budgets over into maintenance services and a new budget.
Definitely put it together better than, I won't, I shouldn't, well, I misuse the word, better than the last couple of years. I mean, we, we're gonna have to get someone to order us food tonight.
We could have ordered food if that would have made it better. Well, I, I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor and Council. I, I, I think, uh, it's been a lot of effort, a lot of effort. Quick three months for me getting into knowing as much about the budget as I do. Um, the staff really helped. Uh, I couldn't have done it without them and, and I'd like to express a, a personal thanks to, to the staff for all of their efforts in putting this together and, and a personal thanks to you all for the opportunity to, to sit up here with you and to present this to you tonight and, uh, look forward to seeing the progress that we continue to make.
I'm just glad after all that's gone on and all that you have done, that you're, you're still willing to sit up here and.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going anywhere. We're about to buy a house. I'm not going anywhere.
Thanks, Council. Thank, thank you.
Yes, sir.